I need to take a new orange jumpsuit.
Why is your orange jumpsuit? And then orange jumpsuit.
Okay. It's six o'clock, folks. Welcome to the business meeting for the City Smith Center. Today is October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Let's see what we've got going here. First thing in order here is me to approve the minutes from October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and also pay the vouchers. Moved by Mr. Kingsbury. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manchul. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Most approved. Approve the minutes for October thirteenth and pay the vouchers. Previous non-relevant business. Roof replacement at the library. We've got two bids, is that right?
Yes, we submitted this request for proposal. The letter's in there that we sent you three commercial workers, all licensed, ten to use the center. Noel building maintenance and McGee has returned their quote. The third company did not.
Okay, and obviously the bidding is closed at this point?
Correct, it was closed Friday afternoon.
So we've got a bid from the Knowles, I assume that's the Knowles at Osborne, is that right?
That is correct.
For sixty thousand dollars with a fifth from McGee Roofing out of Clay Center for, let's see, fifty-three thousand, fifty-three thousand one oh six ninety-nine. Does anybody in this room know anything about McGee Roofing? Because I am not.
I am.
Have we used them before?
I don't know that we used them before, but he's been in business for a long time.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't look at this bid?
Not that I know of. He flew up here during one of the big storms and had two sons around. He's hit very many houses, but he was here a couple of years ago. Burned his name.
So this guy is modified bitumen, single ply membrane, and saying it's better than TPO, and they're suggesting TPO. So they're offering like bidding the two different types of roof. Just FYI. It's like two different products.
Looks like Mr. McGee has also not included in the bid an option for insulation. Did you guys see that? Last line item.
And then this one, this whatever membrane has a ten-year material warranty. And this one has a five-year workmanship warranty, but I don't, I don't know what the material warranty is.
Yeah, it's uh, TPO fifteen. It's right here. I think it's the first line item on the warranty page. Title GAF, duty warranty. I think it's the first line item at the bottom of the page, the Evergard TPO forty-five mil. So if we're reading that right, which I'm really not first in roughs, but let's see, it's ten year versus fifteen.
Yeah, that's interesting, right? Because his whole like little thing here is about how much longer his lasts, but it doesn't seem like it. The warranty wouldn't imply that it does.
So it's actually longer than that. No. R and R, remove and replace. So actually, McGee in his bill of material, line two, R and R, single ply membrane mechanically attached sixty mil. So I want to assume if he's tearing sixty off, he's going back with sixty. That's twenty year.
But if you get the art, it says, is, is that the mil, the insulation?
No, mil is just a thing of the system. He's just thrown out that we couldn't do it.
Oh, I see. I got you. Yeah.
And then Evergard, sixty is twenty years, right Chris?
That's how I read it.
Just more of that many inscriptions?
It's sixty-five, a twenty-year warranty with insulation, because it looks like he recommends that based off of his figures to get to the Kansas R value.
Is, are we got insurance for this person though?
Do you have insurance for this? No, this roof is over twenty years old.
And they didn't have any damage on the other, I mean, it never got turned in, did it? Had they overdone?
Oh, we didn't have damage on that roof when they came in. What was theirs existing from years ago. They have leaks in the roof, cause reportedly from the library, you should have right out from the original roof.
Insulation. That's what I see, but I'm just going to be clear. Well, I would add the insulation. And because it's twenty-nine instead of seventeen, because we're just basically paying for just the insulation, so they'll bid sixty thousand, you're up two thousand dollars if you tell them. No way.
And we get ten more.
And you get ten more years warranty.
Well.
Well, probably insulated the library a little better.
Right. Well, I think we're all on the same page. If, um, go further discussion. I think we need a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion to our McGee Roofing LLC to do the library with the insulation.
So let's accept the bid for fifty-three one oh six ninety-nine, so that cleared that up. And then we would like to purchase the additional insulation for the roof, bid at twelve thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Agree?
Yeah.
That's, that was your bid?
Yes.
Okay. We need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Okay, we're getting the funding. We're good on funding. Now that we passed it, we're gonna figure out a way for it. All right, I think that clears the new business. Looks like ED's up. What you got?
Just a couple things. We have a had a vote, move forward with debt collection services for HB, HDB. Owner Chris Rowe. We sent that certified letter six months ago. No payments have been made. Delivered by, sure, I believe it was. Since then, he's come into the city, removed what account he did have, signed up, it's been removed. All indications, he's selling everything and leaving. So, uh, almost two years behind completely in all his payments together. Total value unpaid right now, approximately, I'm ballparking this, around twenty thousand. So, uh, this was unanimously voted by our board, no abstains or objections, so. Need you guys figure out what you're gonna do.
What length do we have to stay on?
Well, it sounds like you already sent it to debt collection, correct?
We have not. It has to go through you guys first.
Oh, well, I would approve that.
And then we would move forward with that, just as we did.
Start collecting ASAP.
As soon as we can.
And Scott, Scott and I had a conversation about, you know, just like maybe some alternatives that he was gonna talk to them about if there was any property that could be attached to, but I don't, I don't know. It was never collateralized against any real estate, so it's probably not gonna happen.
Their only collateral that was supposed to be in the thing was equipment only. And we elected as a board to defer, trying to acquire that collateral, just due to the fact that as Tabitha said, we'd probably have to get a court order to try to get that equipment. Then we have to sort, store it and sell it and try to recover that. So I think we just go.
And your debt collection agency may want to do an order of replevin, because that might be the best thing. So I would just defer to them to say if they wanna do an order of replevin and get it and sell it, I would just defer to that agency.
Now, the reminder, the cost of this, the last time we did this with the shoe store, it's essentially a thirty percent hit on that twenty thousand number. That's their, that's their fee. They do all the paperwork, all the stuff. That's what they get to take. If for some reason they can't get anywhere with it, for the additional five percent, they go the full way through the court system and they throw every book at it they can. So, uh, but as of right now, he's behind that dollar value and more already, so it's not like
Why?
And recovery is better than none?
Do you just need a consensus from us, or do we need a motion on that?
We need a motion.
We need a motion to move forward with debt, debt collection.
And the two options, right, thirty percent or the thirty-five percent where they take it all?
That's their fee structure. That's their fee structure. The, the first one is automatically the thirty percent. They, they only go to the thirty-five and if through a certain period process, they.
I just thought for the five percent, we just, you know, it's there was two options.
They'll try, they'll try the cheaper way for us first.
Okay.
And then it's an automatic deal for the last contract we signed, okay, so.
Uh, yeah, any further discussion?
No, I don't.
Everybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pursue debt collection.
Motion by Ever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walburn. All those in favor say aye? Aye.
Uh, the only other item I have on here, I can't bring up because it regards me. So do you see that list item on there?
Last item on the last page.
Yeah.
Oh, separate?
Yeah.
I think you can say that.
Well, I don't, I just wanna make sure we're all, all good here.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the table, the reverse, Scott, for the meal cost of one twenty-three seventy-five. Second by Tracy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Other than that, I don't have any other news for you guys. Yeah, that was a quick meeting. I'm done.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next up, Rec Commission. We probably will have everybody here represent that, do we? Does anybody know what the story is here with this?
It looks like they want you to send this letter to the Hanson Foundation supporting their, I assume, a grant. A grant application for the Sidels Training Facility. So it's basically just a letter of support.
Did we draft this letter or did they, they?
They did.
They did. They're just wanting the.
I imagine it's part of the grant package that they need the council's support.
Which I think we spoke about this in depth in the past, so. All right. All right, so again, in summary, the Ken Sidels Youth Training Facility Group has asked for assistance and their support for the letter to the Dangie Hanson Foundation and their financial requests. And again, if you guys recall, we spoke about this previously and we decided we were all on board with what they were doing, and I do think it's good ideas. If everybody agrees, do you want a motion on that?
It can be either one.
Yeah, yeah, consensus to the council, just proceed and support their letter. Well, next thing in my agenda is Christmas lights, but Jamie, you're on the departmental listing here first, so I guess we'll go with you. You got any thoughts?
Checked on a Tahoe. I got some. He sent me a mockup with the graphics. Either one of us was really happy with what they had sent us, so he resubmitted them and knew what I was looking for. There was some stuff that we deleted off there that they added in, so I should have that sometime here this week. And he said he's got about half the parts in for the vehicle, so he said he should be calling sometime here to get it in, and so.
Any ETA when you're gonna receive the vehicle? Any estimation, estimate?
No, he said he had like nine vehicles sitting in there and he's been sick and his coworker had been sick, so they were a little behind, but he said, getting parts is part of the problem, but he said, yeah, get these graphics and he said, get them done and get that back, so we should be good to go. I talked to Josh and read about him and they agreed with me on, on the, on the graphics, just it looked good. He noticed something that I didn't, and he said, and so he already kind of made up his mind what he kind of wanted to see different. I agree with him, what, what he was talking about, so.
It'd be nice if we could have this in place by the time snow's on the ground.
Well, that's kind of it, so, or we're just gonna go with the, we'll have an undercover weed vehicle, so we'll get the radios put in there. Part of it, we always get the graphics put on later, but like I said, he's having, having some issues, just like one place is getting everything in with.
Right.
And so, the other thing is, we ordered new tires for the two thousand, twenty-one and the two thousand sixteen, they're getting down where if we have any snow or any slick weather, they weren't going to get down to the warehouse, so we got them. Brittany ordered those through Hannah's land, and they'll send them up to Kingsbury's and they'll get them mounted and stuff for us, so. So they should be in here. I checked on what I talked to you and the mayor about, the security warrants, and I found some that are not too bad price. So I'm gonna get, look at, get those ordered. Three of them. I'm just gonna get one for each car and then have them. So if we stop somebody and we feel like we need to, you know, sometimes we pack people down, you're getting every winter time and have extra layers of clothes. That's just a little extra protection that you give us and, you know, even the chair saw this guy, if they're working like this, so.
Yeah, yes. So you guys know, we were talking to Jamie about purchasing some security warrants to be able to have people, they're not pat, pat them down, but to run them over the body, see if they pick up anything, just to have a fresh vehicle or reach control. Okay, anything else, Jamie?
Well, in light of the accident that they had down Hayes with the kid getting hit on the scooter, I think, we might want to check and see if anybody has like a program, maybe we can go to the school and talk to the grade school kids and the faculty up there, maybe even talk to the parents or even something we can post on our website, you know, kind of explaining to the parents that, you know, if they've got questions before they buy them, come and talk to us. I, Tabitha and I discussed this about the scooters and stuff here, what we can have go, something like that, just on different sizes, which ones were, you know, you need a license and which ones, you know, are just, they're legal, you know, but they're just like a bicycle. You, you have to, you know, everybody buys them for the kids, but I don't think they realize that, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. This is, uh, they've become very popular all of a sudden.
Yeah, and I, and I think they explain them to them, you know, I'd rather have them, you know, like the push ones. The kids would be up on the sidewalk, but you get downtown down here in the business district, it's just like a bicycle. They need to get off and walk them, because we have doors that open up and stuff. And so when the liquor comes, you know, they're traveling twenty mile an hour, you know, when you hit somebody or they get hit, you know, you have some, it's a, it's a half a system.
So you're proposing to visit, like have our school program for the students?
Yeah, I think that's where we'll go, because I think the kids are there, maybe, you know, take half of, half the rates for the class of, you know, see what the principal thinks about it and build that route and even talk, maybe go to junior high, find something, see if I can find something. I've got a bicycle safety thing that we've had for a long time, but I need to check to see if anybody has some.
I think that's a real good idea. I've had, I've, I've had some concerns myself about how fast they are and the lack of respect of a child who's with, you know, a lot of times they don't have helmets on. My kids are required to wear helmets, as far as I know. I'm sure it's not always the case if I'm not watching, but, you know, they're so fast and you know, it's, it's no different a bicycle or a motorcycle. We know how quick that stuff happens. We're just having that happen in the community as well. And we sure don't need that to happen again. So, yeah, I think you should put that together, work with the school and make that happen sooner than later, because scooter season is quickly going to dwindle on us. And then if you're thinking about something for parents too, I think that'd be all right. I don't know how you would coordinate that, but for sure with the students, the school. Yeah, I, I think that, that's a good idea.
You know, we can find some literature for the kids to take home and give to their parents or whatever, the school, and maybe work together, what's the.
It might be okay to just not scare them, but let them realize that, you know, driving on the streets isn't a privilege. It's they're not, not a right, it's a privilege, I think is what they always said.
Yeah.
And they, they should abide by the laws of, of the streets and, you know, I, I see a lot of kids blowing through stop signs and running down the streets and no helmets and, uh, yeah, I think you're onto something there. I, I think you should get on top of that and probably sooner than later.
You know, because it's what, you're gonna have more of them, you know what I'm saying? It's something that's here, you're gonna have to, you know, and so if we get on top of it and start kind of working with it, maybe we can.
Get something in place for that.
You know, and kids can pass it on, older kids, you know, kind of look after brothers and sisters and stuff, and so. And so, I have other, you know, we have problems with people, you know, with cars when it stops.
Right.
And, you know, and that could be where you run into both of adults, you know, and so they need to kind of learn their hand signals and just, just so they know, you know, so.
I got some excellent ideas.
And.
Are there ones large enough that you registered?
Well, I, you know, that's the thing. There's a lot of them, there's not a real registration thing for them. They, they have to be a certain age. We have some of them that, and I need to check into this, like the bicycles, there are certain, they have numbers on them. They're so electric, yeah, because, yeah, so a certain age can only go so.
We spent a lot of time looking at the statutes and the regulations, and it's a little confusing, and I don't think I was like about to go into court, so I don't think we ever got to a point where we fully understood, but there was definitely like, so the stand-up scooter is treated like a bicycle, and then the e-bikes are treated like a bicycle up to a certain like speed. And then you, and then it's treated, like a moped is treated like a motorcycle, not a scooter, so people there's a lot of like terminology that can be confusing too, because you can, maybe you call your moped a scooter or you're calling your moped a moped, but it's really not, it's really more like a motorcycle. Um, like a Vespa is actually more like a motorcycle in the code, right? Because it, you can't pedal it, it's not actually a moped, right? So, yeah, it's definitely clear as mud.
Anything else, Jamie?
I don't think so.
Yeah, if you're gonna think of anything, let's just ask them to go.
Jamie, no.
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 Thank you, Jamie. Stay on top of that training thing. I'll let you know more about it. And try to get your vehicle ordered before snow's over.
Yeah.
Not much you can do about it, but. All right, Rick, Rick, what do you got for us?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Wow.
Amazing.
Who's gonna take ownership of the Christmas lights for most work?
Me. Oh, yes. Um, so as soon as I got down there, I had lots of people mention that we need new Christmas lights. I've been down there for twenty, twenty-five years, the ones we've had down Main Street. Um, so Kim and I have been working and we got eight different bids. The ones that you see are the three of the lowest bids that we got. These do go through the purchasing program, so they are quite, actually quite discounted from what they typically are. Jill has already submitted a grant request to Prairieland, because these will be LED lights, so they'll be a little more efficient, and they'll be brighter. Um, we also are working, Kim and I are working on a grant application for Dangie Hanson, uh, to try to share some of the costs in that. We also spoke with Valerie at Economic Development to see if maybe they would be interested in helping purchase some ones that would be along the highway to get some more lights up there, since we have a lot of traffic going on the highway. So that's, that's my goal.
I wrote one today for the Schrader Foundation. Yes, that will take over tomorrow.
So what's your, what are you asking? Just, are you just putting this out in front of us, or you want?
Yeah, I'm hoping for a soft approval for the smallest bid, because they have assured me that we could have these by Thanksgiving of this year, if I got them ordered. The other two companies, they, they have to produce them still, so it would be next year before they could even get them to us. So I, I know that it's, a lot of people have just been asking for it, and if we are wanting to get it done by this Christmas season, then that would be our best bet. To hurry up and get them ordered so we could have them and then work on the grants and the funding after they're up.
Any idea how long before you hear back on the grant?
Um, we do not have a timeline for Prairieland. The Schrader Foundation meets in November.
And then for Dangie, it's November twenty-fifth.
What's the cost?
The cheapest bid is from a company called Display Sales, is that right?
Yes.
And that is nineteen thousand nine dollars.
Or how many?
Nineteen zero.
Forty-four.
Forty-four at.
Lights. Mm-hmm, and they're four feet.
How far does that go? Is that only up on the highway?
That is down Main Street, and then what we're asking for Economic Development to do is ten additional ones for the highway, which, um, this company has all fifty-four lights ready to go. They actually have fifty-seven. None of the other companies had any, anything close to that, so.
Have you looked at this, Rick, at all?
No.
Do these hang like what we?
No.
They don't, but this is the only company that they also, they, they send new hardware for the poles, too. This is the only company that came with the hardware as well.
Hardware is quite expensive.
It is.
So school will be on this, Rick. If, if we agree to buy lights and if we do get them in time, this hardware that has to be attached to the poles that we don't own, are, are we allowed to affix them to the poles, or does that have to be done with Prairieland?
We do it all the time, so I don't know where you stand on that. I mean.
Then what about the ten poles that we don't have lights on now?
That's they, I, that would be, somebody's had to do something, because I don't even know, I had, I talked to Jill about that. I don't even know if there's ten poles up there. Did you go look?
We didn't look for sure to see how many we would need, but the hope is to be able to stretch from the hospital.
Because James thought, James thought there was five. From city limits to city limits. From city limits to city limits that you could put stuff on. He was talking five, that's why I told, I told them they better go look because I haven't paid any attention.
He's had a lot to do with it, but that day that he was in the office, he indicated five down the directions.
Yeah, that's what I thought he was saying too, that there was five on each side, so that's why I won't take them. Okay.
I haven't looked at our old lights, but I thought they were pretty. But I'm, I was born on Christmas, so I like them. I mean, I'm not objecting, I just don't know, is there something, are the old ones bad?
A lot of them are broken.
And we got to replace those, well, I think almost every year I've repaired them, pretty much every, every year.
There's a, there's a pretty general consensus in the community, they say our lights, our lights on Main Street, the actual lights themselves, the city lights are ugly and our Christmas lights are ugly as well. I remember Caroline was on it, which for years to get new lights downtown.
Actual?
Yeah, get rid of them, which I didn't realize they were that bad, but she didn't get very far with it. And then, yeah, the Christmas light comes up, maybe not every year, but we're close to it, two thirty. To me, they're fine, but I guess they're ugly.
Is there, is there a warranty difference between the three companies?
I haven't looked at that.
And then also like size and scale, how varied would we get up to?
They're the same size.
Same size.
Yep, we had those measured and these ones you can get anywhere from three to eight feet. The ones we have currently are four feet, so that's what these are priced at, is the four feet.
Now, most LEDs, I think they're fifty thousand hours or something, but I don't know. I won't have my glasses.
Yeah, it's the old cans with the LED circuit, if the kids can get to them.
Right, they're real.
Which they won't do.
I'm old, I like red, green.
Yes, we tried to steer away from the colors. Just to try to do something a little more boring, sorry.
White, white somewhere or white lights.
Yes, they should be bright though.
The good thing is, is this, this is my new company.
I'm old by the way.
Me too, I like colors.
Prairieland had all the new lights.
Sorry, take us in the
They're getting an oiling deal over town, so.
At least we'd know maybe a yes or no.
I haven't looked on Main Street to see, they did some south of the tracks. Those things.
Maybe we could get Rick to do some other pretty lights.
They string some color lights.
Rope lights down. There's originally up.
Maybe, would you like a business contest of lights? What if you got a part of the same thing? Well, probably.
Yeah. Probably.
Can we get those shipped?
What, like the?
Diamond, one night, red, green.
That's going to be an up charge. It's going to be a remote, but for each individual light, are you going to keep track of all the remotes?
Rick will.
Rick will.
I'll give you my take on this. Just my opinion. Anything in government is not fast-paced. You're kind of putting this under the, beyond your own, but get it in before Christmas. And I appreciate all the work that you did to make this happen, to get it out in front of us so quickly, but somewhat, I feel, trying to be conservative and I really don't feel comfortable blowing nineteen thousand dollars without knowing that we can get some kickback on grant money. That's my opinion. And asking our boys to get fifty-some lights on and attach new hardware is probably not going to be just a day job. I would like to know if we had funds to help support the effort available before we spend on it. That's just my opinion. You guys?
I agree.
Yep.
Makes sense.
I like what you're doing, but it's not our money and I wish
That's okay.
I would like some support from other folks. If it's out there, if we can't get it, then we can circle back and try to budget for it accordingly.
Yes.
But I do echo what's been said many times that people don't like our lights, but I guess they're like, okay, but whatever.
This company, Display Sales, also I indicated that it was very thin chance that we could get that done before Christmas. They said they would honor this price next year even at a more discounted price because they would be technically considered last year's decorations. So there is a chance that it could be cheaper after Christmas.
Let's just put that on hold for now and see where we come up with the funds. And then maybe we can even get ahead of the ballgame and order like spring and have it ready for winter or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Good job.
Yeah.
Before we can move on, we do have a couple of things from the office. Through our transit, every year we try to do a driver appreciation, rider appreciation and work on that, and Kim worked up our advertisement and that takes place the first week of November. We would like to host our driver appreciation at four P.M. on November fifth with the office closed so that we can celebrate our drivers. One of our drivers that is on medical leave right now should be home hopefully this coming Friday and would be able to attend. And then this coming Friday for Halloween, we are participating in the truck or treat downtown with the police department.
And an alteser or something like that?
Lawn, turning out test in the lawn.
Only, only to those that are stuck, come on down.
That sounds good. On your November fifth driver appreciation day, you mentioned close the office, like close the office from winter to winter.
Just at four, from four to five.
Okay.
We've, we've worked this every year for the last seven years, give or take. It's just a way to showcase our drivers for everything they do.
Sounds good. Anybody have any thoughts on that or objections? I'm sorry, Rick, did you leave a Rick? I didn't have anything else. You didn't have anything to bring us, we don't have nothing to complain to you about, so it's, it's all right.
Perfect, perfect. Actually, hold on.
Okay, oh, hope too soon.
I'll bring this up, I was brought to my attention today. I don't really think they want anything done, but Buckmaster's sidewalk down there, when they poured it, you can tell that they didn't put the forms off of the existing sidewalk. So now the new sidewalk, you've got the existing sidewalk and the new one kind of sits like that. It's got an angle to it. I've walked to the neighbors, you look out in the street and they're straight on, but you stand in the street and look at Buckmaster's house and it's like that. One going up to their house again? Yeah. The one that curves around the tree looks beautiful, you know, but I was like I'll go look at it. Yeah, so you might look at it and see. I'll tell them to tear it out and redo it. Yeah, I'll go look at it, I haven't been out there and looked. Okay. I just ran into him today and he brought that up, so it's like, I'll mention it tonight, so. That's all I got.
Okay. This bid from American Fence Company, anybody know about it?
Yes. Ryan met with somebody from this company who submitted the bid. This is for the bathhouse up at the pool. I sent it to Dawn, he suggested going ahead, moving forward with it. If you guys are all in agreeance with that. The bid that you have in your packets has tax included. I have, they resubmitted me a bid without tax in it. It's not much different, but it's only about seventy dollars less.
Where they're getting it tax-based.
Well, what? I don't know. That's what they resubmitted me.
Yeah, I was going to say we probably need to ask Dawn to lean on Dawn for this because that's his wheelhouse and he's, I'm not at speed on it, but if you spoke to him and he validated it.
Yeah.
They have all the materials. When we talked to him, he said, we get it, we get it in and get it okay. They'd have it done within one.
And they're talking like immediately or next spring?
Immediately. They have all the, they have all the materials and they're reusing what we, we took that fence and put it back up to close the pool up. They're reusing that fence.
Good.
Is that from the southwest corner, southeast corner to the existing?
Where they stopped, where they opened that fence up to pour that concrete?
Yeah.
It's going to go to the corner of the buildings and there'll be a gate on each side of the bathhouse.
That's pretty freezing, boy.
Okay, sound good to you?
How many motion to get the American Fence Company bid to get it going?
Got a motion on table for the bid of five thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and seven cents less, some undisclosed tax amount of seventy-some dollars.
The new bid amount is five thousand three hundred twenty-one oh two.
Five thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars oh two?
Yes.
Tracy made that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, have all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved for five thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars two cents to American Fence Company for the pool. Jill, you gave us everything you had there.
Yes, sir.
Brittany, do you have anything for us other than the lights? Okay. Melissa, do you have anything more?
No.
Tabitha?
No.
Anything for Tabitha? Anything for Tabitha?
No, sir.
Nor do I. Thank you. Government, governing body report? I don't have anything to speak of, I don't think. Some repairs at the firehouse, but everything's working over now. Yeah, I don't have anything. Tracy, you have anything for us?
Oh, I don't.
Dawn doesn't have much, ever?
Nope.
Ty?
No, sir.
Okay, I think there's one last thing.
I'd like to call an executive session for ten minutes, elected personnel to discuss city or non-elected personnel to discuss city employees.
We're tabitha and Tim.
Yeah, Tabitha, we're staying.
Yes.
Same with Ty. Hold your good time.
Aye.
Aye.
It's a quarter to
Thank you guys.
Do you need Jill? We might need Jill. I don't, unless, well, do one of you know, because I don't really know what else is going on, so I can't time frame some stuff. I'm like, I, all I know is what that's like, longer says.